City Council Meeting of April 1st, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Heran Kunko, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winterspoon, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, I would, in this time of silent meditation, ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, both locally as well as throughout the entire globe. Also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of March 18th, 2015, and bills for payment on April 3rd and 10th, 2015. Mrs. Heran Kunko, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winterspoon, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Okay, thank you. Are there any requests for repository sales today? Are there any requests for repository sales today? Seeing none, we'll have the citizens to be heard, and we do have one person who has signed up on the agenda here, Mr. Randy Barnes.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President, council and guests. My name is Randy Barnes. I'm here to speak on what is $81,732 in free coffee. And for our guests that aren't familiar with this subject today, we had a city clerk that worked here for 48 years and retired. The city clerk collects a $68,000 a year pension, but four council members decided that they needed him around for two more years, and they gave him $1,000 a month to be here. So, I tell you, in my opinion, I'd much rather see Mr. Horton get $1,000 a month and help these kids out than a retired guy. Thank you. And those four council people, for you citizens that need to reiterate, those four council people that voted this $12,000 a year for the next few years were Councilman Witherspoon, Councilman Jones, Councilman Winterspoon, and Councilman Person Heran Kunko. Now, I want to read from an article back in October, about the former clerk worked 40 hours in August. It goes on to say, well, have no idea what he did in September, October, and we don't know what he's done the rest of the time, but in this, Mr. Clem says, "I know some people think this is a big joke." Well, I would have to disagree with that because I think most people think it's a big joke. And let me read some from some postings on Facebook. Paul Tate says, "Typical city of Erie mismanagement. He should have never gotten that contract." Jim Clem, "Ripping off the city for four more years than we can count." John Mulligan wrote, "So why didn't he do this when he was clerk? No wonder the city's broke." Nancy Pace, "What a crime." Soanne Toomey, "And this is why my taxes are being raised?" Well, of course it is. We didn't have this position a year ago. You know, it was something, one of the probably the brightest statements, or probably said in council here for quite some time was, on television, Councilman Mersky said, he voted against this hiring, said that he saw this as a luxury, not a necessity, given the state the city finances are in. Of course, we read in the paper today, "We're going to borrow $10 million and pay another $10 million in interest so we can pave our streets." And kind of deviate from just a little bit. Explain to the public, one of the council people, why we aren't doing the tax lien sale and avoiding this bond for a couple of years. But I want to get back to the subject at hand, and these are these four council people that voted to pay this man $12,000 a year for the next two years, Councilman Witherspoon, Heran Kunko, Jones, and Winterspoon. I wonder just what was in it for these council people? What was in it? Because I don't understand. I mean, does this $12,000 get turned back over to council people and politicians who are running for office? Because we had a chance to see on television that one of the council people that's running had a fundraiser, and Mr. Clem was there donating his money, maybe donating the $12,000 back. We don't know. Again, $12,000 doesn't sound like very much, but if you look at the big picture, it's $8,000. You've paid this man $8,000 since August, and what has he done for these children? What has he done for these children's parents? What has he done for council? Said on the Next Star report, a local television station, it said, "Council members say his experience in the position, history with the city, will serve as an aid while the new clerk transitions." I didn't know that Rose hadn't transitioned yet, but apparently she hasn't transitioned because we're still paying this man $1,000 a month. Now, I wonder if maybe Rose, or the person that has the clerk's position, will transition before the 24 months are up, do you think? Or do you think it's going to take the whole 24 months for this man to aid in the new clerk's Again, you know, what council has done is, hey, they have successfully driven businesses out of the city, caused the businesses that are left to have to charge more for their services and products. Case in point, I did the french fry test yesterday. Go to McDonald's at 12th and Sass, small order fries, $1.49. Drive four miles east, Buffalo Road and Harbor Creek, small order fries, $1.29. What's the difference? Well, the difference is, it costs a lot more to do business in the city of Erie. And granted, it should because you do have paid fire and police. But 15% more, the poorest among us and the people that are stuck inside the city have to pay 15% more. Do you ever wonder why there's no grocery store in the city of Erie? Grocery stores typically work on very low margins. When you work on very low margins, how can you afford to be in the city of Erie? How can you run a grocery store and compete with grocery stores that are just on the other side of the property line? Well, that five-minute tour goes faster when you're having fun, doesn't it? Hey, thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Any other citizens to be heard this morning?
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Amira Rose. Can I put this? Okay. I'm a part of the Youth Institute, City Youth Institute of Erie, and also the president of the Student Ambassador Team. I'm basically coming to you today to ask you about a project that we were thinking about for Global Youth Service Day on April 18th. Basically, the environmental project is to put between 10 and 15 trash cans all around the city of Erie and decorating them so that we could help combat litter in the city. We could put these in different neighborhoods and also in different boroughs or parks. And then, I have...
What we are asking for is that, one, can these trash cans, if they were to be approved, be added to the city's trash pickup routes? And also, if they could be maintained by the city? Because these will be painted trash cans, and the reason that they will be painted is so that people will notice them and actually feel obligated to throw them in, not just throw them on the ground. And we would also like to ask if you, anyone in the city council, have noticed any place that was really dirty and that could use a trash can in the area?
Also, what I just gave to you was actually, if your answer was, "This is not possible," or noted in my answer, then maybe we could decorate the trash cans that are already existent in the city of Erie so that they are more, they pop more, and that people are more prone to throw their trash in them. That's all.
Thank you so much.
My name is Chris Majock. I live at 5405 Appleman Road in Mill Creek Township. I'm the Chair of the History Department at Mercyhurst University. I'm the co-chair of the Historic Resources Survey Committee of Preservation Erie, along with my colleague Dave Skelly and my other colleague Melinda Meyer. We'd like to present to you, just for a few minutes here, some information that pertains to an ordinance that you are, I believe, considering now or soon will be regarding the possibility of delaying demolitions of historic properties in the city of Erie. Toward that end, we'd like to present this handout for your consideration. I'll introduce my colleagues in a second who can speak a little more specifically to the ordinance. I'm going to talk just for a minute about the kind of big picture. We are civic leaders whose larger aim really is the strengthening of our community and all communities in this county and the improvement of this region's quality of life. In 2007, a group of us founded an organization called Preservation Erie that believes first and foremost that the future of this region is rooted in its past. We believe that the built landscape of the city and of Northwest Pennsylvania is a tangible expression of our richly layered social, cultural, and industrial history. The built environment shapes our identity and our sense of place. We believe, Preservation Erie does, we try to engage like-minded individuals, civic leaders, agencies, organizations, property owners, developers, in regional discussions, that's why we're here this morning, about the cultural, historic, and economic value of protecting and reusing historic buildings and structures. We seek to advance public policies that link the potential of historic preservation with smart urban design and a strategy for sustainable development that can help rejuvenate the region. Historic preservation elsewhere, and you all know this, if you've traveled anywhere and you have, historic preservation is an essential element in creating vibrant urban places of character and charm where people want to live and work and play and visit. We know that in this city. We know that in this region. Further, all the data from cities around the country, including this one, tells us that historic preservation is a job creator. It's an economic engine. In terms of construction jobs and rehabilitating buildings and spurring small business development, historic preservation is essential to effective strategies for development. As noted in the Destination Erie Plan, it also is critical to a vision of regional environmental sustainability that helps protect green space, guards against unwanted suburban sprawl, and advances vibrant, healthy, walkable communities. Preservation Erie recognized years ago that the region has lost a lot of buildings in recent years. Thus, one of our goals at the outset in 2007 was to get a comprehensive and accurate picture of just what we have in the city and in the county. The last inventory of historic sites and structures, as you may know, in this region was conducted when Ronald Reagan was president, was finished in 1982. Therefore, we set out on this project three years ago, initially with Mercyhurst students who began photographing and documenting over 500 structures in the city. Knowing that we would need, however, to hire a professional team, we made the case successfully to regional partners to fund a professional inventory of the entire county with support from the Erie County Historical Society, municipalities throughout the county, and then our community partners, the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority, the Perry 200 Commission, the Erie Community Foundation. We have engaged, over the past year and a half, a professional firm out of Chester Springs, Pennsylvania. You see the results or a summary of the results there in front of you to conduct the first countywide comprehensive survey of historic resources in this region in more than 30 years. So at this point, I want to introduce my colleague, Dave Skelly, co-chair of our committee.
Thanks, Chris. My name is David Skelly. I live at 4211 Colonial Avenue in Mill Creek Township. Chris has pretty much defined the project. I will say, from a historical standpoint, when I worked for the County Planning Department in the '70s and through the mid-'80s, we worked on the original inventories. They were done piecemeal because there wasn't a lot of money back then to do everything at once. We're fortunate now to have received the funds to do the entire county, 1940, back. And so, there are 31,500 structures on that list countywide. We had to do multi-municipal for the first phase, so we did the two cities. We did Erie and Quarry. And the city of Erie, if you look on the second page, the flip side of what was just passed out, you can see Class 1 through 5. Class 1 are those that are either on the National Register of Historic Places or qualify. Class 2 are significant and may be eligible for National Register designation and so on. The demolition delay ordinance would be referring to those classes, 1, 2, and 3, those structures that are on the list as those three classes. You see on the right-hand column the number of properties. Those are for Erie and Quarry together, so there are 2,516 of those. But 2,394 are in the city of Erie, the rest are the city of Quarry. So there are 226 Class 1s, 245 Class 2s, and 1,923 Class 3s in the city of Erie. As Chris said, these are structures that are too important to lose. We need to try to conserve them, protect them, if we can, to maintain Erie as a vital cultural community. You lose those structures, you lose a lot of what Erie is and has to offer. We need to build on what the folks in the past constructed. So I'll turn it over now to our Chair, Melinda Meyer.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you a little bit about the historic resource inventory. My name is Melinda Meyer. I am the current Chair of Preservation Erie, and I am actually a resident of Harbor Creek, but I have worked within the city of Erie ever since moving here. So I've worked in the city of Erie for close to 15 years and have grown to love the city of Erie. So we did not print for you a full copy of the methodology report. You'll see here in my hands, this 100-page document is the full methodology report that covers the depth and breadth of what our historic resource inventory consultants did. My colleagues, Dave and Chris, have actually done an excellent job of presenting a summary of the inventory work and the classifications of buildings. Our inventory consultants, again, based their work off of that original 1982 inventory. And we see this as a valuable tool for the city of Erie moving forward. The first opportunity that presents itself to kind of connect the inventory to some real work is the demolition delay ordinance, which I know you've talked about on several occasions. You've had study sessions. You may have even seen drafts of a demolition delay ordinance. Of course, the ordinance does not prevent demolition, but it just causes the community to pause for a few minutes to look at the ramifications of demolishing. In this case, it would be one of the properties that appears on the inventory as a Class 1, 2, or 3 property. So as Dave mentioned, that would be roughly 2,300, 2,500 properties in the city of Erie that are deemed historic, historically significant for their architecture, historically significant for the stories that they connect to. And of course, these are physical reminders, representations of who we are as a community. They solidify our character. They have informed our past, and they will continue to inform our future. And so, again, the inventory is an important resource for the demolition delay, which, again, is currently up for review, and we support. We support asking those who are considering demolishing a building that is of historic value, causing them to pause and seek other options in the community if other options are available. And so, again, thank you for the time. If you have questions, I believe our contact information is at the top of the inventory report. Each and every one of us would be more than happy to talk with you further about either the demolition delay ordinance or the historic resource inventory. It was a very fun and exciting project because, of course, we worked with all 38 municipalities. So just over 31,000 properties were looked at. So it was a fun project. So thank you again.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Brennan, could I ask them a question before they...
Don't leave yet. Yes.
So, the classes that you've identified, Class 1 through 5, is it incumbent upon the municipalities to accept these classifications before we can move forward with the demo delay ordinance that affects, what you said, Class 1 through 3? Or how does this go together?
Yes. If this, if the inventory and the Class 1, 2, and 3 properties would be, again, woven into the demolition delay ordinance, yes, the list for the city of Erie would probably need to be adopted as the list as of 2015.
Right. Now, are those designations, those different classes, identified by area? Like Class 1's all downtown, or Class 2's? Or what is defining Class 1, 2, and 3?
There are a couple of different resources. Class 1, 2, and 3, actually, the classifications denote the historical significance of the building. So all Class 1 properties are currently listed on the National Register of Historic Places.
Already?
Class 2 properties are deemed eligible for the National Register and/or appear on the state's listing of historic properties. The state of Pennsylvania actually maintains a list of historically significant properties.
Okay.
And Class 3 are those that are, may actually contribute to a historic district or would contribute to a historic district and may be eligible for either the state's listing or the national listing. So those Class 1, 2, and 3 properties are really the most historically significant for architectural reasons and/or location and/or the stories that they represent.
And the demolition delay ordinance, we did talk in study session some time ago about that. It wouldn't, so you would suggest, at this point, it would apply to those classes, not everybody citywide?
At this particular time, yeah, we are recommending that this is a place to start.
Okay.
Yes, yes, 1 through 3.
1, 2, 3.
We need 3 microphones.
Has the index or whatever the...
The inventory?
Inventory?
Yes.
Been sent to all of the municipalities so they know which properties are in these different classifications?
We are very close to that point. The methodology report that I have in front of me is the next-to-last draft of the methodology report. We have a few more additions to make to it before we're ready to print it. We do have, in addition to the methodology report, our consultants wanted to try something new. They have never done this before, but they actually created a website in conjunction with the inventory. The website is currently in development, so it is not final, although I don't know if websites are ever truly in their final form. But if you're interested in taking a peek at the website for the inventory, the URL is on the front page of that document, and it's www.eerb buildings.info, and you can search it. So what our inventory consultants have done is they've created a website where you can search by municipality, you can search by address, you can look at maps, you can look at photographs of buildings. Because in addition to the methodology report, in addition to the website, they've also done some GIS mapping for the project. So each classification, you'll see, has its own color. And so what they've done is they've mapped the city of Erie and all of the other 37 municipalities using that five-color classification. So there are maps available as well.
Great. Is there some process of notifying homeowners or property owners that their property now is identified as eligible or could be eligible? I'm trying to read what I wrote down for the Class 1, 2, and 3. I know 1, but 2 and 3, would there be some notification of property owners that they're now under this preservation target?
Are we talking about the inventory or for the demolition delay?
I think kind of both. I'm just thinking if we were to go forward with the demolition delay, which we have all been favorable of moving forward on that, we wouldn't want the people to be surprised that they were in part of that ordinance.
Right. No, I would actually recommend...
2 public meetings?
Oh, well, we do, yes. So a couple of different answers to your question. One is in regards to the demolition delay ordinance. If indeed this list of 2,300, 2,400 properties is adopted as the properties impacted by the demolition delay, we would recommend sending out correspondence to those property owners at some point, notifying them of this particular ordinance. In regards to the inventory and letting the public know the results of the inventory, we actually have a couple of public meetings coming up. So we have a meeting on, or I'm sorry, a presentation on May 14th at 6 o'clock to Erie County, the Erie County Planning Commission. We are attending their meeting. And then the day before, on May 13th at 7 o'clock, our consultants will be presenting at the Jefferson Educational Society. And that is a free lecture, a free presentation, and the title of the talk is "Our Historic Treasures, One Building at a Time," or something along those lines.
Okay, sounds good.
And we've distributed press releases. We are still in touch with all 38 municipalities. So once the draft becomes the final form of the methodology report, we'll be communicating with all 38 municipalities the fact that this methodology report is available to review, and the website will be available to peruse too as a resource.
Okay. Thank you very much. You've done a lot of work.
Okay. Thank you. We have done a lot of work. These guys have worked very hard.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next citizen to be heard?
Thank you. Hello. My name's Ian Fersa, and I'm 12 years old. I am volunteering this year again to participate in GYS, Global Youth Service Day, April 18th. This is a time when youth from all over the world come together to serve their communities by helping needs of others less fortunate. One of our hot topics, issues, is the environment. This is a passion of mine because I believe we are the caretakers of this beautiful earth we are to live in. But how can it stay beautiful if people are polluting it? In my neighborhood of East 10th Street, between Hess and Payne, trash bowls around and graffiti is painted everywhere. I do not feel safe in my neighborhood. I want to have a place where kids can go to be safe and play and not be stuck inside with video games or TV, which causes obesity, which is another one of our hot topics. We want to have nice, clean parks with flowers, garbage cans, and with no graffiti or drug dealers, with no prostitutes. We want the children, we are the children of the neighborhood, and we would like to reclaim our parks back. Could the police patrol the parks more so we can feel safe? Can we get the graffiti cleaned up? Can we have pretty flowers or plants so we can feel like our community matters? How can anyone be against a child going to a park to play and be safe? Thank you. My name is Ian Fersa, and I'm your future. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
City Council. My name is Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. Here to speak this morning on the Community Development Block Grant Plan or proposal that the administration has prepared for your support, approval, or change, or input, or policy. Overall, this plan represents a status quo resolution to the chronic poverty within our inner-city neighborhoods. It is reactive in nature and does not represent any human investment or development of human capital. Rather than investing in summer work opportunities and education, recreation opportunities, the city has chosen to focus on community policing and housing rehabilitation. It does not consider, or it does consider, the root causes of poverty. It does not consider, or it does consider, the root causes of poverty, which are unemployment and lack of education. While other cities across the nation have seen the need for youth employment programs, the city has chosen to ignore the need for our youth to gain valuable work experience and acquire soft skills. Both the mayors of Philadelphia and Pittsburgh have summer youth employment initiatives. These cities run and operate youth employment programs that affect thousands of youth, and mobilizes hundreds of businesses to become stakeholders in the community. Last year, the city failed to fund the Summer Jam program. Despite the lack of funding from the city, 117 youth successfully completed the program, and 100% of the 29 employers were satisfied with the program and were willing to participate this year. With funding from the city, Summer Jam can expand and employ more youth. Summer jobs provide valuable work experiences for low-income youth who often face competition from adults for the same low-wage positions. It also provides soft skills, confidence, and a healthy out-of-school activity for at-risk youth. Further, it nurtures public-private sector relationships, which are needed to holistically affect poverty. If the city is not willing to fund public services beyond community policing, then it should explore options for recruiting and training low-income and minority workers to rehabilitate homes and redevelop property. Since the majority of CDBG funds are going towards city-related services, public facility improvements and housing rehabilitation, the city should employ members of low-income neighborhoods in which the redevelopment and activity is taking place. There is no purpose in cosmetically changing a neighborhood if the city is not investing in the people who live there. There are ample opportunities to create an apprentice-type program in which individuals can learn valuable building and trade skills. The city's Section 3 compliance reports list zeros, zeros, for employing low-income and minority workers or contractors. In order to fully comply with federal mandate, the city should take more of an effort to recruit and train low-income workers. In addition to the points mentioned above, the plan does not address the rising population of new Americans and immigrants in Erie. UECD is disappointed to see a lack of any funds whatsoever devoted to this critical need population in our community. No funds. Erie is host to a vibrant refugee and immigrant population, who have come from all over the world and settled in Erie. Since 2003, the yearly influx of refugees into Erie County has increased by nearly 800%, and represents one of the top resettlement areas in the state of Pennsylvania for refugees. 10% of the Erie School District are English-language learners. Most come from refugee camps or developing countries in which access to education or employment opportunities is severely limited. They lack English-language skills and a work history to become a gainfully employed. Despite the burgeoning new American population, there is a lack of funding for refugee-immigrated related services in this plan. The Urban Erie Community Development Corporation operates an after-school program for over 150 registered new American youth, and no after-school programming staff. The little amount of public services funded that were available went to organizations that have received funding consistently over the years. I would implore the Erie City Council to take a look at the community policing budget within the Community Development Block Grant Program, and I would urge you to divert $200,000 of that money to a summer, to the Summer Jam program, and give young people in our city an opportunity to know that the City of Erie supports their working. If you look at the last 10 years, how much Community Development Block Grant money have you put into community policing? You just passed a pension, a tax increase for pensions. They got a $3 million federal grant. They got a $300,000 grant from Community Foundation, and now you want, the mayor wants to give them $500,000 of Community Development Block Grant funds. I say have the courage and the foresight and the will to make a decision to divert some of that overtime money to giving young people an opportunity to work in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next citizen to be heard?
Good morning, Council. I'm Sonya Arrington, founder and director of MATV, Mothers Against Teen Violence. As you all may know, just this past Saturday, I had my second annual job fair. We had over 100 kids. It turned out really well. But the thing here is, we have more kids than we have jobs. I share Mr. Horton's concerns. You know, as of last night, we just had another murder in the City of Erie. Our community is in crisis. And one thing, my first thought is, if we keep our children busy, we will keep them out of trouble. You know, look at these young men and young women. These are our future leaders right here. You know, we say the children are our future. We need to invest in our future. We have a lot of things going on in the City of Erie. And like Mr. Horton said, the Summer Jams program, we need to put more kids to work. I hope we can double the amount of kids that we had working last year. You got the county, you got the gaming commission, you got the Community Foundation. They willing to put our kids in the city to work. So, why not our own city invest in our future? If we want peace on our street, we need to put our children to work. You just think about it. A lot of these kids that you see standing on the street corners in the summer, if they have something positive to do, whether it's working, playing a sport, do you think they'll be standing out on the street corner? These kids need something to do. We need to bring back the love, the hope, and the peace to the Erie community. I am tired of all this violence. And I challenge you guys, the City of Erie Council, to invest in helping put more kids to work this summer, because our city depends on it. And the last thing that I want to close with, all this violence going on, it don't matter whether it's in Harbor Creek, Mill Creek, Meville, Fairview, we are still Erie County. It affects us in a whole. Thank you, and God bless.
Morning.
I'm Mr. McDonald. My prop is 19th and Reed. This is a part of our future here. They can't go out there and take no jobs. You should get some money together and give them summer jobs. I remember when I was a kid, they want some money in their pockets. Those kids need some money. What they gonna do if they don't find a little job out there somewhere? There's a little boy came to the house the other day, yesterday, to shovel the snow. And I got a big old boy to shovel that snow, but after he left, I thought, I said, "I should have let him shovel that snow, because he's out there trying to make him $2 or $3." Those kids need some money. They need your help, whether you want to give it to them or not. You haven't been giving it to them, but you should wake up. You should wake up. These kids not raising themselves. And they didn't come down here because they want to be down here, 'cause I don't come down here 'cause I want to be down here. I come down here because y'all, you're screwing up. You're not doing the right thing. You should have townhouse meetings. That's the people's, what they want. You don't know what they want. You don't know what you want. You know, I'm looking at your agenda, and all this money you're gonna spend, you anticipate it. Why don't you anticipate something for these kids? You better get them some jobs together. Every little, here you want to put all that money in that park out there. I don't see where you need to put another dime in that park. You got them stone things on four corners out there. What is that out there for? To me, that's a waste of money. But this won't be a waste of money. This is an investment. This is an investment in our future. If you don't teach them how to do, then you can expect anything. You're condemning them, in which I am too, out there doing all that shooting. The police ain't got to kill up none of them. They killing up each other. But if they'd have been going to one of these centers, getting together to understand each other, we wouldn't have all of that. But I don't know, some of y'all want that. But they gonna quit killing up each other after a while, and what they gonna be doing, you're not gonna like. I promise you that. Because you can't see no further than your nose, but I can see a little bit farther. I know, if you don't groom them now, ain't nothing you could do with them later. I see, we got jails owned by outsiders. The state don't control them no more. When you get them peoples in them jails, you're not gonna turn them out, 'cause when you turn them out, that cuts their money off. That was the wrong thing to do, privatizing jails. But some politician came up with a bright idea. You know, sometime, you get bit by that stray dog out there too, trying to get by. We can't get by all these kids. These kids, you look at them, you don't see no white faces out there hardly, all black. Y'all look out for y'all white faces. You gonna look out for them faces too, one day. You gonna wish you had them. I promise you that. Kids are kids. Hey, when you came up, you had something in your pocket, if you didn't have it, you wanted it. I'm saying to you, give these kids a break. Some of that money you're spending, spend it on them centers. Make jobs for these kids. They're not asking you to give them nothing. Put a job out there for them. Give them an opportunity to work. You need, they need to learn to work. This ain't something just jumped up on you. I remember when I was, when I got out there to work, it's hard to start out to work. You got to, you got to work into it. And while they're young, give them a little job. As they get older, you ain't got to worry about them doing nothing wrong. They'll get out there and get what they want themselves. They get out there and work. They're not asking you for no handout. We're paying these taxes. What are we paying these taxes for? Make a tourist town. This ain't gonna be nothing but a bloodbath, if you don't do something about these kids. They just, they ain't shot close to your house yet, but it's coming. If you don't do nothing, it's coming, because these kids know you're screwing them. That block grant money, what do you do with it? You don't spend a dime on them. You don't spend a dime on them. Them entities down there that you, you put up tax-free. Them taxes is landing on the poor's back. Somebody got to pay them. Why do you have this? It don't make sense to me. Here you got some more, bill is gonna go up tax-free. It don't make sense. You better look into these things that you hear me talking about. I'm not no brainstorming. I never claimed to be, but I ain't crazy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nishmir Manabonadventure. People call me Barney. I live East 20th Street, 1434. I think we should get summer jobs, because it would keep me out of the streets. I'll have something to do in the summer. I won't be outside, like, if I don't have nothing to do, I won't be outside, like, trying to find something to do. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fikir Abrahin. I'm from Eritrea. I'm 16 years old. I go to high school. I speak two languages. I got five brothers and two sisters, and we need summer job. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eya Abraham. I'm 16 years old. I go to East High School in 10th grade. I'm from Eritrea. I speak two languages. I'm here today because I want to work. And the last few months, I've been trying, I've been going to job fairs and companies applying for a job. I've learned it isn't easy to get a job, but with your help, we might have more job opportunities. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mustaf. I'm from Kenya. I speak two languages. I got four brothers, two sisters. I came today to ask y'all for summer jobs. As a teen, it's not easy to find a job, but I want a job, 'cause it keeps me from the streets, and helps my, and I want to help my family with, like, you know, with everything they need. And with y'all help, it's gonna be easier to get jobs, and I won't be in the streets trying to do some bad stuff. That's it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew Chirpak. I live at 2212 Fairmont Parkway, and I am here to support the summer jobs program, the effort to take $200,000 out of the community policing, I believe, of the $500,000 that was given, and give it to the program. It's almost come, it's almost become banal and cliched to say, but to truth embedded in all things that endure, we cannot solve our problems with thinking that ignores the problem, therefore perpetuates the problem. I stand before you now and ask you to remember what the Latin root to the word radical means. This word is, anarchists and silly youth have given it a bad name, but there's a deep, the root to that word, I think, is what you all must truly affirm, and it is to be, it means radics, and that root, and the word, so it means to go to the root, to the root of the problem. And by giving money into policing, sure, we need it. I'm not saying that that's, police are ineffective or somehow part of the problem, but it doesn't go to the true root. And the true root of the problem is, we're not bringing in our youth and truly blessing them and saying, "You are sacred." And we recognize that some of you are coming from families with trans-generational, multi-passages legacies of trauma, where you, where it becomes very difficult to believe in yourself and to feel part of the community. So, and I find it enigmatic, and I dare say morally untenable, to not put money into the summer jobs program, when, in the wake and in the light of huge research coming out of places like the Chicago Crime Lab, University of Pennsylvania, Harvard, and Yale, that have found that, you know, it's been long conventional wisdom, you know, a summer job stops a bullet. Well, they put that to test, and sometimes you need empirical evidence to get money to allocate to certain areas. And what they found was, that not only does a short-term, low-cost summer job program work, but it has lasting benefits, they found, in Chicago, Inglewood, some of the hardest, worst places in the country, 12 to 16 months improvement in behavior, which suggests a lasting, deep psychological shift in the psyche of the child, that says, "I'm something. I'm somebody. The fact that they reached out to me means I'm blessed." And I think that's what we gotta do, by putting money into the program for these beautiful young children who are infinitely precious, who have one and only lives like I have, but being white, I come from privilege, that they may not have. I say we do that. And I say if you do that, it means that your hearts have not been cut off from the deep truth that is ultimately the goal of your position. And just one last point, where was I going? Okay, so yeah, I mean, I was gonna print out these studies, you know, the ones I just referred to, but I think it's part of your job to keep abreast with research literature, to really understand new stuff that's coming in. So, I didn't do that. I hope you all are doing that, really joining the national dialogue. I mean, it seems to me there's some sort of, I don't know how to articulate it, maybe, I don't know if you can follow, but a Bermuda Triangle within your positions, where these great studies come in. For instance, I believe it was Harvard also that did a huge study on happiest and unhappiest cities in the country, and they found that Erie ranked one of the most unhappy cities. And what did the news do? What did the media do? They almost made a parody on, I don't know, it was Jet 24, or wherever, whatever. They said, "Oh, how can Erie, how are we depressed? How are we unhappy? We have Waldemir," and they showed a roller coaster, not to put down Waldemir, it's great. And then they showed some other silly frivolous things, which I say are silly, because they're obviously not the deep core things that we need to feel part of a community to really, and partake in it. So, conversations like that, there should have been a huge discussion. Is there something Erie's lacking? Do we need something more than new pillars at Perry Square? Is that what gives deep intrinsic belonging? Is that what makes us happy? And I think what really what it is, it's just that conversation. It's bringing everybody together and saying, "Hey, I want to hear your voice. I want to hear your voice," and really saying that your voice matters, 'cause you're a human being. And also, I want to tie this into something a lady said earlier about this idea of not just tearing down buildings. I think there's a, she was tapping into a sense of sacrality that I think we need to tap into when it comes to summer jobs program. She's saying, "These are not just buildings that we should just demolish, but they're places where human beings live their lives, where if we were truly present, we would see them as something that shouldn't just be-" we would see them as something that shouldn't just be demolished. I think it's that sense of sacredness that we need to really affirm and get back in touch with. And also with, of course, with the Summer Jobs Program. I, I, yeah, it was Gandhi, of course, he said poverty is the greatest form of violence. And I'm not saying that these kids are violent any way, absolutely not, but it's obvious that if you look at the studies, if joblessness in predominantly disadvantaged minority youth is the cause of violence. So I, I think, again, it's enigmatic, and I dare say reckless, to not take some of that money and put it where it needs to go. Obviously, with that, I leave you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. My name is Felix, 641 East 12th Street, originally from South Sudan. And I'm here today because first of all, I'm a father, I'm a babysitter, I'm a youth and child counselor, and I have a deep passion for young people and for teaching. As you already know, you probably guessed already that I'm here talking about which demographic. It's the same thing that previous speakers said. I'm here talking about the young people that we have here and many others who are around the city. Our beautiful young people in the city are hopeless. Their, their hope is waning, because all that they have tried, their parents have tried, the teachers, their counselors have tried, is failing, because something is missing. What is missing? They have nothing to do, they need money in their pockets, as somebody has already said. Everybody need money in their pocket. I need money, you need money, and all our children need money too. They can't just sit there wait for us, and wait for their parents to give them money. They want to earn their own money. So with summer jobs or any other job, if there is a help for our young people, you will see a decline in what is being spoken in Erie, in the media, on the streets, and all over the place, in small forums, in big forums, the violence on our streets. Just, you've just heard from the last speaker, studies that have been shown, the studies show that it will happen. I lived in Chicago for a year, and I lived in Indianapolis for four years, that's where I went to college, and I seen that. It does work. Give these young people hope. That hope comes in terms of jobs. Give them that little job, give them that little job, let them earn 7.5 an hour, they will be happy, they'll be happy with that little money. You not see all this violence going around? You not see graffiti and all kinds of stuff happening? And it will prepare them to be responsible citizens in the future. If we need peace, if we need calm, if we need our streets and our city, not to be a depressed city, we need to give hope to our children. In turn, that hope is gonna trickle down to their parents, to their teachers, and to It's time for us to wake up and do something. We can all do this, work together. Thank you. God bless our city.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cecile. I am 18 years old, I go to College of Academy, I'm a non-graduate there. I want, what I wanted to say is that I am, I am like in a household with nine people and none, no one is working. We need this, uh, summer job so I can, like, I, I applied for Donuts Dunkin', Taco Bell, Family Dollar, Family Video, I haven't heard from none of them. So please help us with the summer jobs and we'll really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shajina, I'm from, I'm from La Burea, and I'm 15 years old. I need a summer job because I need to help my mom and my sister, and I got like two brother and five sisters, so I need a summer job, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Katie Morton, and I work with the, many of the youth that came here today. And first of all, I'd like to thank them personally for coming here today, because they came here on a day off, they beat both myself and Mr. Horton to the center to take a bus to come here at 8:00 AM. Most of them found out about the city council hearing yesterday, and they immediately decided that they'd like to come here and advocate for themselves. What they also didn't tell you is that many of them stay after our program ends to clean our building for free. They volunteer to do the maintenance on our building, because we don't have the funding at our center to have a full-time maintenance staff. So they take time out of their day, after their school day, to stay and clean the building. So that dedication, for them coming here at 8:00 AM on a day off, that dedication with them volunteering, the dedication to continually search for employment even though they get rejected, that shows you how much they want a job, how much they're serious about it, and how much, and how well they would thrive in a summer employment position. Most of them have resumes, most of them have had interviews already, we do soft skills training with them, they participate in mock interviews, we teach them about appropriate dress code for the workplace, how they need to dress when they go to an interview, so they're ready, they have the skills in place, they have the commitment, they just need an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Veronica Rexford, I live in Mill Creek, and I work at Mothers Against Teen Violence with Ms. Arrington, and I have an association with Mr. Horton Center, and that I've been out there many times and seen these young people participate in his program. Something I'd like to call your attention to, a little bit different from what other people have spoken about, I'd like to echo, as far as the job fair, I've had the privilege of planning the job fair at Mothers Against Teen Violence for the second year in a row. We've had a ton of wonderful, well-dressed, well-spoken young people come in looking for opportunities, and particularly the 14 and 15 and 16-year-old young people in the community coming in looking for employment. It's phenomenal. There are very, very few opportunities for them in the community in private employment, there are very few employers that are looking for people that young, and they are hoping to put money in their pocket, they're coming in and they're calling and they're asking for help. I offer the opportunity to any young person who came in, who did not have a computer at home, to make an appointment and come into the Booker T. Washington Center, and this is something that I know Mr. Horton offers at his center, to come in at any point in time and use a computer to apply for a job. The new American community is the only reason why we have not fallen below third-class city status already. If we do that, if we fall below 100,000 people in population in the city, it would be my understanding that there is a lot of state and federal funding at stake. The downward spiral at that point would be almost irreversible from my perspective in terms of what happens in the city. And although I am a resident of Mill Creek, where the city goes, so goes the county. I'd love to see the city, the county, and private employers cooperate in a more close manner to bring more opportunities to young people to earn an income, and to recognize that the new American community, so often overlooked from, from where I stand, has a critical role in keeping the population of our city where it's at right now. And we need to focus on prevention and retention. If we do not retain our population and we do not practice prevention, the consequences are devastating. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Nikia Schofield, I am a teen looking for a summer job. As you know, there are many people dying at a young age, not making it to the age of 19. I am one of the kids that want a summer job to stay out of the streets, to make it, live my life to the fullest, to stay out of trouble from getting to dying at a young age, and I am one of the kids that wants a summer job.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow. Hi, my name is Edison Nicholson, I'm with the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie, and you've heard some from some of my students that are talking about Global Youth Service Day. I would like to invite all of you to be a part of it. It is the world's largest youth service day. This is an opportunity for our young people to give back, not to just receive, but to actually give back. So on April 18th, right now, we have about 700 young people that are geared up and ready to go on Global Youth Service Day, and like I said, we would invite all of you to be a part of that. I have brochures, which I will leave at the clerk's office for you, and it has all the information, the dates and the times for you to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard today? Are there any other citizens to be heard today? I would want to, before we go on to the next part of me, I wanted to thank all the speakers today, and especially young people who took the time out of their day to come here. Yeah, we definitely appreciate your input, and we'll definitely be working, working on a lot of those things. Thank you. Ms. Roby, we can continue with the rest of the meeting?
All right. Ordinance for first reading, Council File Number 15912. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, $350,000 to be received as a grant from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, and $650,000 to be received from private donations for the Perry Square Project. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Kowalski. The Council File Number 15912, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. City Council File Read and Adopt, Council File Ordinance 15912, by yeas, seven, nays, zero, on first reading. That'll take us into new business, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any separations? Wouldn't there be separations, Ms. Roby?
All right, moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roby. We want to start with Mr. Witherspoon today, would you like to report?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yesterday I had, last night I had the opportunity of attending a meeting of the Central Neighborhood Watch at the library, and they are preparing for their celebration of Day of Caring, and their president did an outstanding job, number one, in conducting the meeting, and they elected new officers, of which the public left at that time, and I'm sure we'll be hearing about it. But they are planning their Day of Caring, and I plan to attend their meetings more often. Also, I received a call regarding, I think we all seen it last year, where this one house in our neighborhood infested with bugs, roaches, et cetera. I received a call from the neighbor, and I found out last night as well, at the watch meeting, that the city, Mr. Zimmerman is on top of it, and the gentleman who's causing most of the problem, if not all, is hospitalized, so they're just waiting for him to get out to hospital. The Erie Housing Authority, they're doing fine, Mr. Rand and his staff and board, it's moving right along with their plans, and just one notice that the young folks that were here today, I'm very happy and I'm proud to see them, and I do understand that jobs are important, especially when you would like to have a job to help take care of your family. That's most important to me. But also, the city do have jobs, yes, they're not participating in this particular program, and there is jobs, let's see, approximately $307,000, and 5,086 participants in the program, averaging about $60 per participant. The city is working with, the YMCA is basically in the Erie Housing Authority, and we will try to do a little more. We will sit down with the mayor and see if we can do something. I'm concerned, as well as you are, because you are going through a stage of life that I've been through personally. So we're gonna do the best we can, and we will fight to do what we can for you and the program, and we will see what the outcome will be, because we cannot force you to do anything, nor can we force the mayor to do anything, and nor can we force each other to do anything. We will work together for the betterment of the entire Erie community. That's our job, the best we can, and we will do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Mersky?
Mr. President, just a few things to report. With Mr. Witherspoon, I was at the Erie Neighborhood Watch Council Meeting, they did reorganize for, for the year, and remarkably, there were not a lot of complaints from the neighbors that attended that meeting, and, but we're, we're looking for ways to move forward with increasing our Neighborhood Watch programs, so that they're citywide, and I know that because the Neighborhood Watch program is county-funded, they're looking to expand countywide. They do have a Neighborhood Watch now in Mill Creek. I also attended the East Ave, Hess Ave Neighborhood Watch Meeting, Glenwood Heights Neighborhood Watch Meeting, and Burton Deal Neighborhood Watch Meetings. Glenwood Heights and East Avenue, Hess Ave Neighborhood Watches are both applying for NRO grants. Those grants are available through the Neighborhood Resource Organization, up to $1,000 per Neighborhood Watch group, so I encourage our Neighborhood Watch groups to do that. Also, Burton Deal Neighborhood Watch is working with students at Central Tech High School, collaborating with them to build benches for McClellan Park in their neighborhood. So that, that's a good development there, putting young people to work at Central Tech and beautifying our parks. And also from the Neighborhood Resource Organization, they're having a community forum on code enforcement on Tuesday, April 14th, at St. Peter and Paul's Church, 511 East 34th Street, at 6:00 PM. The public is invited to attend to learn more about our code enforcement operations here in the city, and the speaker that night will be Andy Zimmerman, the head of Code Enforcement. And that's again, Tuesday, April 14th, 6:00 PM, St. Peter and Paul's Church, 511 East 34th Street. I also attended a meeting of the citizens interested in Roma Park. Roma Park is the park that is between, adjacent to Zimmerman Road, behind Tops, north of Tops Market on the east side. It was spearheaded by a group of Joanna Connell teachers, and what they want to do is create an outdoor classroom space there, and so it was a very interesting meeting. We had representatives from the county, from the state, and I represented the city, and it was very, very interesting. They're still in the planning stages, but they have some, some good plans, and they have, they're in the process of networking and connecting with other... they're in the process of networking and connecting with other community leaders in the environmental movement to try to bring that project to fruition. A report from the Convention Center Authority, we're very pleased to announce that the Sea Wolves have new ownership that is committed to keeping the team local, and we're hoping that the Otters can announce something shortly of a similar situation, so we're excited about that. They're also putting in a new PA system at Jerritah Ballpark. Just like our homes, you need to constantly update, and the PA system was starting to short out due to the fact that it's an outdoor facility, so they're purchasing a new PA system, and I believe the cost of that is about $14,000. But it'll enhance the sound system at Jerritah, and work continues on the parking garage and hotel down at the Convention Center. Now that the weather's starting to break, God willing, they'll be able to ramp up construction on those things. And finally, large item pickup begins on April 12th, one large item per week, and it runs through May 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Ms. Kunso?
Thank you, President. A couple of things to report today. I do have an update from the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority reported that they are working on the sale of the Union Square properties and completing that with Rick Griffiths. Also, the Parade Street condominiums were purchased by Mr. Griffiths, so we always appreciate his investment in the city of Erie. Also, the Redevelopment Authority reports that this year, they will be, this coming fiscal year, July 1st, they'll be implementing one new program, an emergency repair program, and as we get information on how homeowners in the target area can apply for that, I will pass that information along. Also, one of their primary goals in the coming months is to convey some of the single lots that the Redevelopment Authority owns and is charged with maintaining, so they're going to be working very diligently on selling those single vacant lots and get those back into taxable use. So I will keep you posted on that as well. I did want to mention that we have a finance committee meeting following this meeting, and one of the things that I will be reporting at that meeting is an update on the status of our collection of delinquent garbage bills. We did go into the new billing system as of this year, 2015, where the bills are reconfigured, so the sewer and garbage bills are together, and the water bill by itself. Our report includes a huge increase in the number of people who had those delinquent accounts. If you recall, the delinquent account amount was over $2.5 million, and most of those folks were not in payment plans back before we started the initiative. There was, I believe, I'm trying to remember the exact number, like 95, maybe, payment plans on these customers in the past. And since we've started working on this initiative and to reduce the delinquency, there are over 2,000 customers who are now in a payment plan, meaning that they realize they're going to have to pay this debt to the city. We cannot pick up your garbage for free, it's just not something we can do, and they are now starting to pay back. The amount collected on the payment plans is over $380,000, collect on those payment plans, which amounts to a 20% collection of delinquent payments that were under plan. So the original amount under the payment plan was 1.8 million, and now it's down to 1.4 million approximately. So we're making progress. We're also seeing an increase in people paying so they don't go delinquent, so we're making some serious effort in getting this squared away. We can talk more about that in finance, and we have a full report. Just before I close, I do want to thank all the young people that came out today. We had a couple of different issues that you all were addressing with us, from the Global Youth Service Day and your effort and commitment to our community, our neighborhoods, and our parks, and we really appreciate that, and you were very articulate in your message today, and also the issue of the Summer Jobs Program. We certainly appreciate your enthusiasm and desire to work. We are meeting to talk more about what is in this Community Development Block grant budget for the coming year, and we certainly have heard you and appreciate your input. Thank you for coming to see us today.
Thank you, Ms. Kunso. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by thanking the young people who are here, those who made that concerted effort to get up on a no-school day and get here, and we appreciate that. And also those who weren't able to be here, but the spirit of what was represented is with them as well, so we do recognize that and honor that. Mrs. Rancunzo just mentioned, we will be meeting with Kim Green, the Director of Economic Development, actually, a little later today to talk more about the CDBG budget and some other nuances, and get some clarity from her on how some of that money's going to be allocated and spent and drawn down. So we may, you know, may be able to have some conversation around some wiggle room, maybe not. No false hopes being given, just we are constantly looking to make sure that we're doing the best we can with what we have. You know, it's interesting, because we have you wonderful students here talking about jobs, and some of the adults working with you, and rightfully so, questioning and asking the question around, is there enough? Is the amount of money we're putting in community policing, is that too much? Can some be moved? But here's the other side of this conversation, another very young, articulate young person said, well, hey, like, I want to come out of my house, and could maybe more police come through my neighborhood so I could be safe in the parks by my house? See, you know, the seven of us have some very challenging things to deal with, because we hear both sides of the story, and we don't have the liberty to be totally focused and have single vision, but we have to have broader vision and be inclusive of the entire conversation. And so I think that's important for you all to know. There's two sides to every coin to make it a real legitimate coin. It's two sides to the story. So we will take in all those pieces. I was in several community meetings in the last couple of weeks, some around community violence amongst not just our young people, but adults, young adults who are involving themselves in these types of behaviors. Also, had some community meetings with members of the YMCA and some of the programs they're doing to enhance the community outside of the walls of their general locations. In relation to the Airport Authority, of course, the airport is consistently looking to improve service and increase the level of excellence that is offered to our citizens regionally at the airport, and also is looking to finding those expansion options. You know, we all want a straight flight to Atlanta or something, you know, right? So there's always that going on, and just constant conversation around the extension of the runway and the safety piece, and how that actually has, you know, we've had to be really thankful for having that space a few times since we've had it available. Not that there was a crisis, but there were, you know, with weather, and there were times when it was good to have a little wiggle room and a little extra space for those planes to land, and so we're appreciative of that. I did get a couple of calls from citizens, and I did call the Public Works Department. I think my message was a little unclear, maybe the phone I was using, but on 19th and Camphausen, in that area, Mrs. Beck, if you could kind of take it back again, there's piles of just rubbish there, and some citizens, residents were calling, asking, is there something that the city could do? And I, you know, talked to them about our code enforcement is based on reports, you know what I mean? And so they're reporting, so we want to see if there's something we can do around that space. I don't have an exact address, but that's the general location. There was something else. Also, I had the, it was fun, the privilege of attending the Mercy Center for Women's event last night, recognizing women making history in Erie. There are a couple of people that I've worked with throughout my career in service, and some people I've actually known for quite a while, who did receive those, that recognition last night, and so we just wanted to recognize all of the women who are serving in our community, not just the 12 who were recognized last night, but all those women who are giving back to the community in a significant way. Also, another item, two more items very quickly. The Roger Young Park, I've been in communication with a family and a few other folks who are really interested in trying to help to, help to beautify and enhance the Roger Young Park in a lot of different ways. And so in the near future, I'll be, you know, giving information to council and as well as the administration around how we can do some different things and maximize the space at Roger Young Park. And finally, I would like to say happy 60th birthday to Curtis Jones, Sr. Today's my dad's birthday, kind of a cruel joke to be born on April Fool's Day, but maybe as you get older, you know, the older you get, you can say, this really isn't my real age. Maybe that's the joke of April Fool's Day. But I just, I want to say that. I love my father very much. A lot of the young people here, and I'm wrapping up, a lot of the young people here talked about multiple and large families. Well, my parents are the parents of 14 children, no twins, together for 40 years. They just celebrated their 40th anniversary in February, and his 60th birthday today. So Dad, happy birthday. Love you very much and appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning once again, everyone. Just a couple of notes, I did attend both the monthly Port Authority meeting, as well as the Transit Authority meeting. Nothing major to report on there. The E did, the MTA, the Transit did specify that they would like to get council maybe for a little tour to give an update on their facility over there on 14th, East 14th. It has come along quite well, and I don't know if anybody's been by it, but that place is huge. There's a lot of work going on there, but just to, once again, show just some transparency that they just want to keep council abreast, but within the next month to six weeks, they'd like to just take us for a tour if anybody may be interested. As mentioned, our finance meeting today, one of the main topics naturally going to be our paving project for this year, as well as yours to come. As all our council people here, the last thing we would like to do is use current bond monies or new bond monies, but there isn't too many options we're going to have. But three of them are going to be presented to us at this finance meeting. Naturally, we don't have a lot of time to think about this, but we have issues at hand that definitely, definitely, definitely need to be corrected, and we'll analyze them and see what's the best fit for the city moving forward. Naturally, our Erie Otters, I know Mr. Mersky mentioned that, their playoffs are in full swing here. Maybe part of keeping that local draw here is supporting this team during the playoffs. Ticket prices are not as expensive as a paperhead put out there. I think there is a little misprint there, they may be a dollar or two a game higher. That's the norm for any major sport. We just need to support our Otters, that will keep the interest here, as well as keep this team in Erie that is great for our local community. With that, other than that, I just want to wish everybody happy Easter and have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Kotowski?
Yes, I attended the Officers and Employees Pension Fund meeting, and things are progressing well with that fund, and nothing there to worry about. They're very proactive, and I'll get you counsel and all of you an up-to-date figure on the value of that plan. I could not attend a Zoom meeting, but I was in contact with the director there, and I will have a report next meeting. I'm going to sit down with him and see what I missed at the meeting. I had a personal family matter to attend to. Towards the administration, I've been getting complaints about people putting out garbage a little too early, some of them actually four days in advance, not even 48 hours, but much more than that. So if you can tell our people to be a little visual in certain areas where we know garbage pickup's going to be. It gets a little frustrating, even some of the people are jump-starting our spring cleanup quite a bit, especially the college kids along 38th Street, and we want to keep our neighborhoods, you know, looking nice. And finally, Jim, I know you're a great supporter of the Otters, but you keep forgetting we have a fourth team, which recently began the explosion.
Oh.
Two-time champions, so let's not forget them also, because they're another vibrant part of our sports community, and that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Kotowski. Ms. Stankovich, we have a report from the controller.
I'll be pretty brief, but I gave everybody a letter, and in that letter, it just says that the necessary pension reports that are required by the state have been completed and filed in a timely manner. So the reports were due the 31st of March, but they got in on the 26th, so it's a couple days early. They were sent to the Auditor General's Pension Unit as requested, and I just want to thank my staff for their hard work in completing the reports and getting them done in a timely manner. And if anybody has any questions, you can call me, and we can talk, or there's copies available in the clerk's office or in my office. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Beck, the report from the administration today?
Good morning. Just very briefly to follow up with Mr. Jones, 19th and Camphausen. Marison and I were just there last week for a groundbreaking for Habitat for Humanity. I think it was their, it's their 25th anniversary. I will make sure that the mayor and Public Works are aware of some trash and some problems in that area, but we were just in that neighborhood, and I didn't see anything, but we'll absolutely circle back around. And Mr. Kotowski, we actually did have some phone calls last week about residents in an apartment complex specifically that were putting their trash out four or five days in advance. I had Andy Zimmerman in Code Enforcement actually contact the property owner, and he was going to let the residents know that they needed to put their trash out on the proper day. So yes, keeping the neighborhoods clean and keeping our city clean are certainly very important, and we will continue to do the work. Everybody have a nice Easter.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did have a couple meetings to report on, actually, one meeting I want to report on, other ones I'll report on later as we get more information. But I attended the Destination Erie, the final plan rollout was last Thursday. There was a summary, and the complete plan is available on their website at emerge2040.org at the presentation. You know, after the presentation, I heard a lot of positive comments, negative comments, and I've heard a lot of things since then. But the study was able to arrive at a consensus and developed 42 recommendations, along with action items for each recommendation. There's been a lot of hard work that was put into the study to plan for the future region and discuss ways to try to work together, so it's definitely worth the effort, because we have a lot of work to do. I think it's up to all of us to examine the plan, if you get a chance, online, try to collaborate, to create any initiatives that make sense, that try to help one of the recommendations, share resources, share your expertise. You know, we can need to use all our strengths and all our assets that we do have to benefit all of Erie County. Also, I wanted to thank the people who came and spoke today about the Trash Art Project. I think it's a creative idea, it's definitely going to help improve the community and help with environmental awareness. I want to thank the people who spoke about the historic resources inventory. That's one of the items that's being finalized and worked on, that will help in preparation for a possible demolition delay ordinance that's been discussed and talked about for a while now. And I'm currently, you know, still working with a solicitor on language and how that could be brought in as an ordinance. So there's been a lot of work there that continues. And also, you know, thank you to all the people who came and spoke, again, especially the young people, to give their opinions on, you know, what the needs for jobs in our community, how it's important to them and to our community. So a lot of valuable information that was given today at the meeting, and again, we thank you. And with that, that'll conclude this morning's meeting. Thank you.
City Council adjourns at 10:31. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.